No, no. Please don't. That's all I'm sure. You're in the start.
All right. The guy. Well, it's order this regular scheduled meeting of the Kildaville's Board of Commissioners. Thank you all for being here. Exciting town to be here. We're going to do our public forum tonight. We do it a couple of times a year. That'll be sort of the end of the agenda there. But let's just keep this thing off with a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to General Wilber, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. We also usually start off at the moment of silence. I was listening to a podcast on my way home from work today about how dire things have gotten in India last couple of weeks. I get to see too much TV news lately, so I really was a little bit behind on that story. And so lots of folks to think about every time we do a moment of silence, but I'll be thinking about that part of the world. So join me if you're among the sounds. Or members, you have an agenda before you, and we got that last week. Had some time to look at it. We thought about that, or we're looking for a motion to approve the agenda?
I agree with you. We approved the agenda for this.
Second motion movement. All right. Any further discussion during that? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 We close the question carries. We have an agenda. This might be a little confusing. We're also going to do public comments night separate from our public forum. We do this every meeting at the beginning and the end of meetings. So feel free to jump in here, or if you'd like to be part of the the public forum, it'll be a little more of a looser scenario. Public comment is usually kind of one directional. We hope to have more of a dialogue with the later part of the meeting. Would anybody like to speak at public comment? Yep.
Yeah, Liza and I have a letter we'd like to share.
Well, that'd be great. If we could just step up to the podium and and let us know your names and where you live and then for the record there, and then we'll keep you glad to hear that.
Yeah. Hi, my name's Amanda Lotus, and I'm a video editor. I've been killed about seven years in Outer Banks, about seventeen years. And I have a son, seventeen, and he's been through Kitty Hawk on Monday, and first flight.
Um, my name's Liza Yow, and I'm a small business owner here on the Outer Banks, and I'm just here to support what Amanda has to say.
We are addressing you today in reference to Dare County Resolution twelve oh two oh five that was signed by Warren Judge on February twentieth, twenty twelve. This resolution opposes United Nations Agenda twenty one, also known as Agenda twenty thirty, The Great Reset, and the Fourth Industrial Revolution. It resolved that the VOC recognized the destructive and insidious nature of United Nations Agenda twenty one and urged the communities to reject these radical policies and destructive sustainable development strategies. When compared to residents of other towns and cities, people here have a great opportunity of owning and supporting small businesses while enjoying a simple life and the freedom of wide open spaces and nature. That's why we found it deeply disturbing when Justin Trudeau, the Prime Minister of Canada, announced that this pandemic has provided an opportunity for a reset. He was referring to The Great Reset, which was also recently heralded on the cover of Time Magazine. It is the exact agenda that Dare County resolved to oppose back in twenty twenty twelve, twenty twelve. How might this possibly affect our lives here in the Outer Banks? Actually, it's already being implemented and is set to seep into the fibers of every local government. This reset is being covertly pushed into local communities throughout the U.S. by the International Council of Local Environmental Initiatives, I C L E I, in the form of local sustainable development policies such as Smart Growth, Wildlands Project, Resilient Cities, Regional Visioning Projects, and other green or alternative projects. In conjunction with this, we set the World Economic Forum, whose members include globalist billionaire leaders, heads of state, Big Pharma, Big Tech, made some predictions for the year twenty thirty. They include, one, you'll own nothing and you'll be happy. You want your right to own land, a home, or a car eliminated. Two, you'll eat much less meat, an occasional treat, not a staple for the good of the environment and our health. In other words, food, resources, and rations will be theirs to choose. Did you know that Bill Gates owns more farmland in the U.S. than any other private farmer? Having purchased two hundred and forty-two thousand acres in the past few years, including in North Carolina. Three, polluters will have to pay to emit carbon dioxide. There will be a global price on carbon dioxide. This will help make fossil fuels history. The reality is that, under the parasocord, China pollutes eleven billion tons of carbon, and in twenty thirty, that number is allowed to go up to twenty billion. There is more pollution coming, not less. Do our small business owners really want to pay more taxes? Four, Western values will have been tested to the breaking point. Do we want our American constitutional rights taken wire? Who wouldn't want to achieve the goals of a clean, sustainable future, zero poverty and hunger, and a decrease in greenhouse gases? However, under the guise of humanitarianism, this reset will bit by bit erode many of our rights. If you doubt that any of this, any of this can happen in America, you can ask someone who comes from Cuba, Venezuela, or any other country that was conquered by communism. Soviet politician Nikita Khrushchev's prophecy of America's fate is one we are seeing unfold for our eyes. He said, "The Americans are so vulnerable. No, you won't accept communism outright, but we'll keep feeding you small doses of socialism until you'll finally wake up and find you already have communism. We won't have to fight you. We'll so weaken your economy until you'll fall like overripe fruit into our hands. We do not have to invade the United States. We will destroy, destroy you from within." Our local businesses are struggling to keep employees because it has proven to be more lucrative to collect unemployment. This is one clear example of our government fostering financial dependency, destruction of small businesses, and therefore, America from within. Meanwhile, the Dare County Health and Human Services attempted to run the Safer Spot campaign that discriminated against businesses with fewer vaccinated employees. The World Economic Forum, the Council on Foreign Relations, United Nations, and many other well-funded organizations vowed that they have our best interests at heart, but do that. We ask that you look very closely at what The Great Reset is really about. Based on the current situation that has been presented with COVID nineteen this past year, we ask that our local government thoroughly revisit the twenty twelve resolution to understand why we need to formulate actions and regulations that deflect infringement on the rights and liberties of Dare County residents. We implore you to pressure Governor Roy Cooper to oppose any policies that coincide with Agenda twenty one, twenty thirty, that are in violation of our rights to private property and bodily sovereignty. Disguised as conscientious environmental stewardship, The Great Reset is all about control. Control of energy, wildlife, resources, surveillance, smart grids, education, food production, and people themselves. When you hear the words "the new normal," is this the future that you envision for yourselves and our children? We're happy to email you links for more information. Thanks, you guys, for listening. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment. And so anybody else who'd like to speak at public comment? Or my voice there? All right. If we don't see anybody else, we will close public comment for the moment. We'll do it again towards the end as well as after. After that, we'll have the public forum at the end of the meeting. We have more for responsible comments. See, a lot of great information in there. Hit a, a lot of topics in a short period of time, so.
We're pronounced for all you guys.
Looking forward to yeah, rereading that and kind of dig into it a little bit more, yeah.
Do you have copies of all this for your claim, the resolution that was signed by Warren Judge?
It's what the twenty twelve one, yeah.
Yeah.
You've been a while.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, we appreciate you taking the time and bringing all that information to us.
Thank you.
Ten would be. So that's a lot of stuff. So it's super. If there's any other further comment, we will move on to committee reports. But there's got to be a report for me. Anybody? Let's just pick what happened last two weeks. What's the more prior to the previous meeting, right?
I have a just briefly. It was my honor to have the last concluding meeting of the Westside Group. I'm not going to do a committee report on tonight, so it will be brief, but just to let you know, we have concluded that, and I'll have a report for the next meeting.
Okay, super. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Good stuff coming, D.
Looking forward to it. Any other, I have another committee reports. All right. Moving on, Commissioners' agenda. Let's see. We started this thing last time. Anybody down here?
Nothing here.
No, I, I sent the board an email this morning about a stop sign on Bay Drive and Walker. She's a citizen, pretty just not really complaining, but concerned about it being difficult to see. And, you know, just that a part of Bay Drive was easy to miss. They got kicked around my staff and did a really nice job in really researching that, providing that gentleman detailed answer. But our agenda challenger beat, you know, a detailed and well researched recommendations. Okay, what we could do, probably address that issue as my foster, just maybe make that an agenda item for the next street improvement special projects committee and let it go through that whole process of relet council research and let community advise on it. Kind of go from there to maybe address the issue, especially considering all the work Pete put into his thoughts.
Yeah, clearly, he's done a lot of thinking about that, and he's got all the best practices as, forget the name of the organization that makes those recommendations on how and when you should use stop signs and when we should have lines. And he did point out that there are certain parts of Bay Drive that are wider, which psychologically encourages you go faster. So there are other techniques, other than stop signs, that are more effective. He's got the data to prove that it's the best practice, and I'm trying to keep speeding those things down as much as possible. So, yeah, I think that's the perfect strategy, and we'll move that in that direction.
What was the citizens' initial concern?
It couldn't see the sign, right?
He couldn't see that. The sign was a little. It wasn't bright. It had some sun damage. It wasn't very clear to see. And where it's located, we're referring to the Bay Drive and Walker. There is a stop sign there. There's really not any, I don't know if there's any other, many at all other stop signs along Bay. And just the difficulty, sometimes you just don't see it if you're right on it. It's easy to miss. It's easy to run through. And he just worried about it, the somewhat of a safety hazard.
The concern is also that the pedestrians assume that they just, you know, just just go by and then there's so much missing that.
Well, there are three stop signs on there. Three in all of them. There are three of them on all of that. And I was thinking, as I read the, the email that you sent, it was, his concern was the stop strip. If they, not so much the stop sign.
Which was done in the past and probably not the best idea, because you know, usually put the strips down.
Kind of went into the sign, not sign, that type of thing. But I think the original concern was the stop strip, I think, if I read it right.
Yeah, three. Yeah, it was two signs and then a light. I think either the light has already been, there were other spots in town as well, but just, I, I dropped that. Yeah, people are at a good point worthy of consideration. And we can reuse those, use that tech group as a chance to kind of really begin.
Put it in the comprehensive plan with all, we have the concerns to go to again. To do straight up across the town.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Talking about letters. I've got one about the, which we get time and noise from the firing range, which is actually next. You know, a lot of good information for that, and a nice conversation with the citizen. I spoke with Ben Ghun about the long-term plan that it looks like, you know, in the long term, it's a, it's a facility that is hopefully will be phased out over a long period of time. Right now, we still need it. There's a lot of training that needs to go on there, but it's being used already far less than it was years ago. And, you know, as we grow up as a community and a lot more trees are cut down in that area, the noise is more and more of an issue. So to let everybody know that we're aware of that, we're working in that correction. These are bigger, longer problems that we can keep on addressing. A little bit off topic there, not exactly committee report, but those are Commissioners' agenda, sorry. Under Mayor's agenda.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Michael, I just got a text from the voice. I guess this is what it's about when they have your cell phone in there. So they're not seeing the stream on Facebook, just.
Real-time solutions. I like it.
At the instant action. Right. It's in Charlotte.
So maybe you've probably, if you've seen this in the packet, on the mayor's agenda. Yes, we're talking about the having a resolution that poses HB four oh one, SB three forty-nine, which is called increasing housing opportunities, but is being sort of widely pan, particularly in, in school government and the leading municipalities and towns and cities, or governments across the state, are sort of up in arms about this, this idea on this bill, because it really takes away a lot of the local control about what and where you can, what you could do in terms of zoning. Basically, it really eliminates our one and, you know, like low, low density as an idea, but basically allow you to build multifamily, you can anywhere you want. I think most folks are still very attached to the idea that that's something we would like to have control over locally. The, the negatives outweigh the benefits, and we do have our own strategies in place about housing that are moving forward in a lot of places across the county. So I won't bore everybody here with all the details that runs on for a couple of pages, but you're welcome to check it out. It's really well-written by the staff, bringing in all of our sort of local concerns about it in terms of the way we mix, you know, single family and hotels and motels and all that sort of things, and where we were, where we, you know, our long-term plan, following these plans in terms of density, different parts of the town. But basically, when you get to the back, it's being resolved that Kildaville's Board of Commissioners opposes these two bills, housing opportunity bills. As proposed, the General Assembly is encouraged to direct, engage with local county governments to consider strategies that increase housing supply, affordability with that, and affordability without compromising the authority effectiveness of most of Atlanta's local governments. So hoping for discussion or motion to put this as, as our, as our research.
Mayor, I was, thank you for bringing that up for us. Research online, and it's something that I've heard from the big people for that.
So I don't think it was that well thought out. I don't know the genesis of how it all came to be, but the reaction to it about three or four weeks ago, like I said, and those other organizations that correspond with the league of municipalities, they were quite shocked by it and really said, well, this is a way somebody to push back on to make sure that this is.
I don't think they thought of it that way.
So it's, you know, well-intended, well-intended idea.
Sure.
Not the right way to go about it, so.
So thank you for bringing it forward.
We will, we'll send a loud message across the state to rally, and they'll come back at it with a different angle. Like I said, it's an important, important challenge to face, but that's, that's not the way we'd like to do it. Any other comments about the, about the resolution? Then we're looking for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution opposing House Bill four oh one, SB four, three forty-nine, increase housing opportunities, as presented, as Mayor's agenda.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you making that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
From the syndrome? Any further discussion? During that, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name? Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Next item is town manager's agenda.
Nothing on the agenda this evening, but I would like to make sure everyone has met our new assistant town manager, Charlene Allen. She's joined us this evening. Town attorney is not here this evening. He did not have any ideas for this agenda, but we would like to wish him and Jamie happy anniversary.
Oh, that's very nice. Happy anniversary and welcome.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Welcome, Charlene.
So great, great to have you on board. We were talking about you in previous meetings. Good to see you here. All right, so following your agenda is the is the consentative. There's the word I was looking for. I know we have a few items in there.
Yes, thank you. The first item on the consent agenda is the minutes from the April twelfth, twenty twenty-one meeting, budget amendments. We have four. First one is to appropriate funds for beach sand fencing available in Dare County. Appropriate funds for the addition of full-time equipment operators, the street department, and full-time facility maintenance specialists allocated fifty-fifty to buildings and grounds solid ways. Number twenty-three, to record grant funds awarded by North Carolina Department of Environment and Quality to be used for some analysis in the twenty twenty-two beach nourishment construction project. And then number twenty-four, which I appreciate you letting us make this addition to the packet, which is to appropriate funds for the Hayman Park Playground Equipment. Our intent had been to bring this to you in May, but when I lost it some research yesterday morning on it, it was discovered that the prices will go up a six percent may first, so it seemed worth our time. Yours for us to bring it to you this evening. So that will get some very much needed new recreation equipment at Hayman Park. And going back to what Commissioner Gray alluded to about the West Side Recreation Group, this was one of her recommendations. So I'm following through on, on that. And then last, with the promotions in town of Charlene to Assistant Town Manager and Angel as the Assistant Finance Director, as you know, we first time purchased. We employed a new accountant, Scott Nickens, and we need to ask the board statutory requirements to appoint Scott as the Kildaville's Tax Collector. And staff recommends approval of the consent agenda as submitted. Mission would be in order.
As always, thank you for stewarding the taxpayers' money in every little way we can squeeze a penny and make it scroll. We are all for that, and I'm sure that the kids in the human area will be excited to get that a little bit earlier.
And this, this is just what the Westside Group was looking for, you know, a little bit more.
Okay.
I think I looked at the, the figures, and I think that actually the original was a bit higher, a little bit higher. And so I called Cameron today and talked with him a little bit. He said they were able to take advantage of a, a pretty good deal with this company, a different company that, you know, the town hadn't dealt with before. So staff really went the extra distance to get, you know, the bang for the buck. And this, this is going to make a lot of people happy. Really is.
You'll, you'll get a great cut. Very good.
Let's get over there with all the new paving last year, and then this will take it to the next level.
Yeah.
This is, this is super.
Well, that one of many items on the consent agenda. Anything else you'd like to comment on the consent agenda? Otherwise, we'll look at for a motion.
I think they'd make a motion to approve it as presented, would be amended. Item.
Thank you.
With the, with the additional part, just about, there you go.
So we have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Second from Mr. Mc. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name? Push carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We'll probably move back to that in five minutes. I really did want to give most of the time of this meeting to be, to a public forum, like I said, we only do this a couple of times a year. And it's the one time that we really try to make it a little more casual, so we could have a little more back and forth. That said, I have a couple of notes here to kind of keep everybody's expectations in check. You know, we basically want to get across that we're really committed to getting citizen feedback. And so we are going to do this slightly different from public comments in that they will give everybody a chance to speak casually on any issues that come up to the floor, that anybody can speak. The exchanges will not be timed like we do in public comment. However, just to allow everyone to be heard, I'm going to reserve the right to kind of wrap up one topic and move on to the next and not let it go to the wee hours. We don't have a huge trial like we have in other years, but we, we don't want to cut anybody off. We'll keep going. We'll try to give everybody as much opportunity to speak as possible while moving along, hitting as many topics as we can as well. Which is set the expectation, we're not going to make any decisions tonight, but we, we may take things that we hear and either now or at a later time assign staff for, for the researcher, or they actually we take it. But everything that we talked about, know that we're hearing it, we're writing it down, and we're giving it some consideration. So thank you all for being here. You know, the government, we're just, they're stewards up here. We're trying to, you know, help have the conduit of what you want to see in your town and carefully steward everybody's taxpayer dollars and, and make this town something, something we can be really proud of and bring everybody together, civic pride in what we're doing. And there's not a lot of fun stuff around the edges. There's a lot of it is the heavy lift, you know, police and fire and the M T and maintaining certain things. But we do get to kind of craft a vision and some quick, put resources and energy in those directions. Forward to doing that. So we, uh, officially make this a more relaxed environment. Would anybody like to pitch a, a first topic? I, I don't want to drive the train necessarily, but just kind of keep us on the tracks. Anybody in the audience that aside, aside from all of the heavy topics that were brought up earlier, worldwide, what do you, what do you think we should be paying attention to here at Little Hills? We're gonna, if you listen to previous meetings, we've talked a bit about working towards having some more gatherings. We do ice cream social once a year. We're now talking about trying to do our own version of a, a community gathering here in Aviation Park, where we might bring in art, music, it makes vendors, it's food. And it's still just an amorphous concept, but we're hoping to get something going for the summer now that we can gather in certain size groups. And hopefully that'll just continue to get better as we get more, more people vaccinated. And so that's one thing that's, that's kicking down the road. We're in the middle of renovating the park over at Meekins Field. And you heard about what's going on at Hayman Park, West Side Recreation Group, if, for anybody who wasn't familiar, has been working for, gosh, a couple of years now. Kind of going through one area of the town, another that could use a little spruce up when it comes to recreational facilities, some that aged over time or getting replaced. Different upgrades here and there. It's been really a great process, a lot of citizen involvement in that.
Are there going to be bathrooms at Hayman Park?
At Hayman Park, not, not at this time. Well, we did look at that. That's generally considered a kind of a neighborhood park where most people walk there. There is a little bit of parking. But when we talk to constituents, tell me if you guys did more of this, but.
Yeah, they, they wanted it to remain, the people in the area wanted it to remain, and they were the part, so we were very limited in what we put in there. It wasn't for being, correct?
The West Side Recreation Group recommended, and the board also agreed with the recommendation to eventually put a picnic, covered picnic area at the, at the park. That's not in this phase of the plan. The first phase was to get rid of the old playground equipment and replace it with some more modern equipment and a wider age variety of equipment. a wider age variety of equipment from the smaller to even, I think some of it is even five to twelve years old. So it was to create more variety in the neighborhood park. And then from there, um the next phase would be maybe a picnic shelter and I think that, I think that bathrooms even might have been included in the long, long term, depending on what kind of traffic there is. Because limited marketing makes it difficult.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was like, I think one restroom.
But will we do restrooms at Meekins Field? That's, that's getting a little so that's a nice shiny new.
Send your message and good progress on that.
Meekins Field's moving forward quite well, and it'll be a multi-use field. Um that will be open, the practice field. Then the playground is going to be the biggest one that we've done in Killable Hills, and it's also going to include a splash pad with restrooms, family restrooms, and shaded picnic areas and places that you could have small gatherings for birthdays and things like that.
Exciting stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, of course, the West Side Group now, like I said, we had our last meeting, so once we make that presentation, then the board will have an opportunity to, you know, direct that group again if they, they so desire.
But I think you and I had talked about this sort of long-term planning document that's getting a little longer than two, that might be ready for a refresh, that just sort of bring in what we've done and how that sort of resets priorities going forward in the next, yeah, five-year, ten-year.
And then, and then sort of what's going to be coming to you, the recommendation to do that.
Okay, great. That makes sense. Take it ahead. Three to your mind.
Yeah, yeah.
Again, I don't want to drive the ship, so what's on the all's mind? Beautiful case.
Um, well, I was gonna ask about, um, I was mainly here to support her, but now that I'm here. I was gonna ask if there was any updates on the Third Street access, downside access.
Right. I had sent some emails about that. Um, he's done. Uh, I'm trying to remember what he said last. They, I think, I'm glad that you emailed a second time because um I figured it kind of got lost in the shuffle the first time, but I know that they were sending folks over there to assess the situation and I, if it hasn't been done yet, I think it's just that they haven't got all the materials together or whatever they needed.
That was the area that had the, the damaged area.
Yeah, it was graffiti and, yes, like erosion and.
Yeah.
And he, he wrote back, I can't remember, wrote you back about the fence that.
Yeah, there was plans, so, yeah.
Yeah, so that, that was a legal fence, but, you know, it looks odd because of the way it's corroded, it seems like.
Oh, yeah, the neighbor's fence is like in the water, yeah.
It was laying there one time.
Yeah.
Is it, is it, it's sponsored by a group, right? Uh, just to take care for, is that right? Cause there's a sign. There's a sign there that says, you know, um that's kept up, we're sponsored by, uh, in addition to adopted by, I guess, so to speak. It was.
You there all the time?
I haven't noticed. None of our estuarine accesses, we don't have official adoption policy. That's the ocean accesses with the Surf Rider Foundation. The estuarine, the estuarine accesses are not sponsored, um accesses.
I'm quite certain there's a sign there. I'm not, could be wrong, but I'm quite certain. I mean, live right next to it.
Or maybe someone, maybe someone took it upon themselves that.
No, no, it's a real sign.
It's definitely not.
It's a real sign. It's a real sign. I don't know.
Yeah, it's, don't check it out, yeah.
I don't know. Maybe I'm wrong, but I don't think so.
I was just like, we're improving more shores, estuarine access, which is up the road a bit north of Hayman.
I saw that on the sign, and I was wondering, cause Hayman has the parking, right, with the gazebo?
Correct.
So there's a new one?
More shores will be north of that, and it'll have five parking spaces. It'll have a, a short pier that will allow for um a kayak or a non-motorized launch um at the end of the pier instead of at the shore. Um, and it will be, uh, it's out for bid right now, and it will probably, depending on the construction timing, um, we hope to have it done midsummer, but um that is out for bid right now, and I were expecting the bids back this week actually, for the pier part, and then we'll do the, the parking, but it'll be it'll be for obviously watching the, the sunsets and birds and things, but it'll also have a, a launch at the end that you could get a paddleboard or a kayak or some other non-motorized, um.
Okay.
Know some grant money model, that's.
It's a north, yeah, Division of Postal Management grant that we got for that access.
Okay. Is that, that Avalon?
The Avalon Association.
Yeah, that access right there, where there's like the boat ramp and everything.
The Dock Street.
Yeah.
That's Fish and Wildlife, and that's for motorized, you know, that's a, a launch for all types of, of vehicles, you know, recreational vehicles, including, and there's the reason we are looking at more shores for the passive kayaking and, and paddleboarding is there seems to be some conflicts with the motor boats and people that want to take their paddleboards out there because they can park.
Well, I was under the impression you can't park there at all unless you have a permit? Okay.
So you're thinking about the Avalon, she's talking about Dock Street. Okay, Avalon Homeowners Association, you can't. That's private. And that's just a grass area. It doesn't have a parking lot.
Okay, yeah, but then the, the Dock Street one.
The one, the parking lot that's got gravel parking across the street, that's a state Fish and Wildlife and a town of Killable Hills property, and you can park there without having a boat.
Really?
Yes.
Cause I have been kicked out of there several times.
Hmm, maybe we need some signage.
But, you know, like guys with their big trucks and their boats saying that they, I have a permit to park there.
And that's telling me the truth.
Well, that's why I was confused. I was like, I don't.
If you're talking about Dock Street, that's the actual parking lot.
Yeah, there's like padded parking and then across.
And then there's two, like, two, like, finger piers that go out, so you can get on and off your boat. No, that's public.
Really?
It's owned by Fish and Wildlife.
Okay, cause I know, I know, I'm not the only one that thinks that.
It's a state-owned facility.
Okay.
It's not a permit requirement.
Well, who, who can we talk to at state that would uh be able to help with some educational signage on?
There's signs all over.
I haven't been there in a while.
The signs are up by the, by the launch.
Over the launch.
Yes. And if you go to take really pretty sunsets in the summertime, that sign gets in your way for that, you know, up there. No, but it's, there, there are signages to the rules and regulations, and it, and it clearly says who, who is.
Thanks, it's a sign.
Okay.
Hey, guys, big trucks, read signs.
Well, while we're on the subject of signage, and it's great that we got the samples here. I got, I got to talk to Dave Elder one time. He, he kind of put this bug in my ear, but the town with all the additional signage that we're putting up everywhere and every access, it's, it's getting to be shotgun style, where it's just, it's tons of information. And it's really hard for a visitor to take all this in all at once, especially as they're most likely passing through these parks and accesses. Each access is really quickly. They just want to get, you know, uh, the car onto the sand. And I'm a little concerned with, you know, how much we were trying to put on all these signs that we want to do, cause I understand, you know, we, we want to have these programs where we want to let people know what the amenities are. But it's a little, it's a little worrisome that we're, we're putting so much out there in addition to the stuff that's already out there. And I, you know, I, I would say that's probably something that needs to be looked into from a standpoint of like, the information delivery is, is, is getting really cumbersome. You know, this is a cycle that repeats, right?
Well, that's, that's what this is showing, is how to eliminate what's out there and have this that tries to hit as much of the
That's the consolidation something, yeah.
That's a, that's a huge improvement over what it was.
Right. But there is a lot of information that has to, has to be made known to people. And, and I totally understand what you're saying. Who's, who's gonna want to stand there and then reading it? So this is, this is an attempt to validate some of that information.
And, and you know, the other thing too is that, you know, I, I, it's, there's not a lot of consistency with the signage around town. Is you can't tell what's a Killable Hills sign and what's a Surf Rider sign and what's a state sign. It's I, 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 you can't tell who's, 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 who's the voice talking. And it's, it seems like there should be an opportunity there for the town to just kind of formalize the stuff and get it a little more streamlined and get it consistent. Because it's hard to tell when it's the town's voice and when it's somebody else's voice and, you know, who's, who's the authority here that you're supposed to be reading the sign from.
So this is the new one right here that will replace the other one, so that one.
replaces the simple sign.
Right, so is that still?
That's gonna be a.
Do you find, I'm just curious, do you find that one to be?
Well, it's like when that's, when there's that sign and there's that sign.
Well, no, this sign is, this is two different things.
Right, and I, and I, and I get that, but it's like when I go from one place to another and I, I don't get the consistency that like, hey, this is from the town, this is from the town, you know, I just get that it says.
Well, this will replace all of those.
All nineteen or twenty accesses will be the, the same every time. So the goal of that was, again, I'm a graphic design person, so, yeah, I can see it's still a good use improvement, but it is a big step from where we were, which was two or three or four signs spread out while beyond, so three or four signs will go away and one will replace them, and it should be the same at all the accesses, so. That's our attempt at it. I'd like to say that you can always imagine it being a little bit better, but.
And I think those signs are going at the park.
These are, yeah, those are going at the park. They're just a wayfinding sign. That's like a wayfinding sign, is what that is. They're good.
We should need.
They're promising.
This sign, if I'm not mistaken, came out of West Side too, right? Yes, yes. So the, the west, and they, they were basically identified the fact that folks around the town often will know one facility or two facilities that are near their house. And not realize that's all these other nice little spots all tucked away in neighborhoods and um that we have a decent amount of turnover in the town, you know, seventy-five hundred new people a year sometimes. So if we have a sign like this that's consistent at all the parks, at least you can say, well, it's just the one park, you have dozens. They're all small and cute, but if you don't know where they are, you don't know where they are, so their goal is to be where you're at.
Or, or so, yeah.
Don't kind of keep them with the character of sultry. Please don't sultry, if ever it's going.
You know, something that everybody thought was uh very informative, to be able to have that at the park and, and let you be aware of where the other parks are at, in case you want to go there. So it's kind of like a wayfinding.
I agree, you know, we want consistency across the board. We're doing some consistency type work with this, obviously with the, the street lights, uh crossings on, on twelve, there's going to be some consistency there. Anything that will make us look cleaner, sharper, and more consistent of message, you know, if we have a lot of exercise out there, we should examine that, take, take them down. Uh, or ask that they be taken down. It's just, you know, just too much signage. Yeah, it's a mess. It's a mess. So, you know, uniformity, great. Uh, maybe you have to do examine all this extra signage that may be out there that could be picked down, you know?
Right, yeah, we're, we're serving a bunch of different functions and, and uh because we're very consumer-facing to our tourism population, which is a lot of folks have never been here before, where we have a little bit different tests for the folks that may have never set foot on the island before and uh don't know what all the rules are, so we're trying to balance all those things out and make sure people are setting off fireworks in each other's developing.
To appear clean.
Show those things up.
Oh, yeah, and to appear clean and
Yeah.
and clear, you know, that, that's, that should be the goal of this town, because there's so much going on at Killable Hills, there's so much, you know, uh, it's certainly a busy spot, so we need to, at least as a town and with our public spots, need to be as, as sharp and you have.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's, I mean, it's, it seems to be one of those things where it almost, I, 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 if you feel about to take on it, I, I'd love to see, you know, what, what's the average amount of time a person takes and spends in the parking lot of a beach access that are gonna actually read all these words. You know, they're, they're, it's, it's probably way smaller than we even think it is, like, you know, to delivering information to folks in such a short amount of time is, is tough. And, you know, it's, it's something that I, 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 I'm kind of passionate about. I think that, you know, the town needs to really kind of take their time and get it, get it right.
Say, this year in my business, we've used QR codes more than ever because it kind of normalized in restaurants through COVID era. And it is a great way, at least for, you know, the eighty-five, ninety percent of the population that uses them. You can scan a QR code that got all that information into me today, at your leisure, underneath your umbrella. Maybe that's another way you can get it across. We already made the investment for this sign template for all of our beach accesses, which is just the same.
We're doing this in-house, so there's some flexibility.
One, uh, one thought is we could maybe take this design, make it an agenda item for CAC to study. Just give some feedback on and then practice. See what they, get this a little more, some gather some more opinions on how, with the people that don't feel about it. And then just to make yeah, we're big fans. Big fan of testing. Uh, yeah, it's just a thought. We have a lot of talented craft designers that live in the town and take pride in the town and like, offer their Yeah, that's alright. I think this is, this is sound good, but what harm is it to do to let CAC or other group take a shot at it, just to get, get some feedback? Balance between doing stuff by committee, but also making sure you have enough stakeholders.
Are we in a hurry to try to get this?
That's what I was gonna.
Uh, timing, this timing.
Well, that means it had been desired the board to have some signage cleaned up, and this was, this was what the staff came up with. It's a pleasure for. We'll follow your lead.
Make it a major item and then proceed after that. You don't have to do it. It's just an idea, but.
I'm just curious if it's a May agenda item that we're looking at fourth of July before they go off. Yeah, that's. I mean, just to throw it out there in terms of time, does that, I mean, is that probably realistic? If we waited, I'm saying.
I'm not sure how long it takes Cliff to do each sign, um, but he's doing them in-house and he's doing it for each access.
They're all customized.
They're all customized. I mean, he put the Surf Rider to consolidate, he put the Surf Riders on here too, so that that sign could be taken down in addition to, so that a lot of the voices have now been put into one spot, you know? The voices before, a lot of them were the towns, but some were from the police department about dogs and glass, and some were from the fire department about the fires and the fireworks, some were from the, you know, lifeguards about the surfboard leashes and their pets and their unattended equipment. And all that, all the voices from all the departments of the town were, were consolidated onto, to try to do one sign. Um, and, and in that, the only thing that's not on this sign is if it was a KMA beach access, which is required to have its own sign by the state, um, which they provide for us, um, that, that's, that's their requirement. If they paid any portion of an access, they require their sign to be there. I'm, I'm su- sure that if, if the board wanted to, to ask for a, a QR code to be added that has this information so that they can scan it on their phone and read it on the beach if they're so interested or, or notice that they put the specific code numbers, if someone really wanted to have that information and.
Is this really a law? Yes, I can look that up.
You know, and you could do a QR code that would give you the more information or, or numbers to call to ask about animal control or the unattended, you know? You could do something like that, but each one of these signs is personalized per access and with the features that are at the accesses and, um, so.
That's great, yeah. But they all look similar, like you said, a good of the access, you said, that's definitely Killable Hills' sign and.
But I think there's three or four signs out there now, and that will be replaced at all the accesses with one.
One.
That's it.
And, yeah, that's the goal.
And it is gone up at Ocean Bay, um, but Ocean Bay has a large, um, billboard type area that they post information that is a regional access sign information. So it gives you a ton more information than any of our smaller accesses, but this sign's up there, and it actually caught my eye today when I was there, just to talk to Dave about something. I, I noticed it. And it, it looked, it looks quite good on their, their board.
That's all we'll be to test itself in the public on at least one spot.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely at Ocean Bay, um, right now, so.
As long as the other signs are coming down, that's, that's.
Yeah, hopefully, that means we're just ahead of your idea. Kind of, kind of, that was doing what we did. That was all we had. We had talked about this last year. Yeah, there's something else you could try. I use them all the time. They've been very effective for us.
And it could even, I wonder if it could even be tagged to like the ocean report, you know, if there were.
We could tag it to the, we can link the website for the ocean report to the QR, to, to where we send
That could just be a safety, I mean, you could. Because that could just be a safety, I mean, you could do, that's endless, you could do. Current information on there, you could do all kinds of stuff.
Those QR codes, they have to stay sharp, or is it some of that phase over time, it won't work anymore?
No, no, I mean, it's just like, if you can read the words on the sign, you'll be able to.
So as a fade, it's still gonna be sort of like, yeah.
Yeah, it's amazing that detail.
On like subways and stuff, they have more sub signs, it's like.
I recently saw.
And it just directs you to a web, a website that gives you.
Yeah.
You do just do a landing page that has all the same information, links to additional stuff.
Anyone has the same information, but there would be links on all the the different things so that you could have phone numbers, or you could actually read ordinances. Or, you know, I'm sure that's what everybody wants to do on vacation.
Like you said, it's a certain small percentage, but they uh they do take up a lot of our time.
Well, it, your percentage may be larger if you have someone that's that's has an oceanfront house and someone keeps has it on the beach fire. In front of their house, that they might wanna know.
Hey, what's up with that?
Uh or they might wanna have one themselves and don't know what the rules are, I mean. All of that would be, um you you could provide links that they could get those answers re- relatively quickly that won't busy up a sign, um.
Yeah. Fewer words, you can have on the sign better.
When when Cliff and and um Ross designed this, they spent a lot of time trying to make it as few words as possible. And I think took it to about six or seven different people in town in different departments, and I think every single person eliminated a few more words, just so that it would be. Quick and and catch your attention, um and you wouldn't look at it like it was a term paper that you had to read, like, you know.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, the good thing about the QR code is, you know, you can modify any of that information easily.
Yeah, it's a living document, you can update it anytime.
Yeah.
You know, something off Fourth of July, Fourth of July, something else in the fall.
And then when we do beach nurse, they can also link to the uh more beach to love, so they know what beaches will be closed and what beaches will be under construction at which time and. If they would.
Well, super, hopefully that's addressing what you're, like I said, it it beauties the eye of the beholder and. Everybody that does art graphics for a lady will find another way to solve the same problems, so. So as long as we're on the topic of beach accesses, this is, I'm just kind of curious what the public thought of. Investment in beach accesses, when I ran for mayor, one of the things that I talked about a lot was that. Civic pride and and what we love about living here has a lot to do with beach and beach accesses, obviously. Huge investment in all of that property. Um and we do, you know, uh refuse collection, and then we've got um bathrooms and places and porta-johns, and that's a good thing. Um and I've heard both sides of this, I have friends who think beach access should always be. Rough and tumble and look rustic, and that's the charm of them. And then other folks are like, oh, these handrails are a little bit past their prime, now what should we be investing or in? Um upgrading them, and then on the vegetation side, it's really, most of them are really left natural, some of them have some plantings. We've had um people adopt the beach, you know, different beach accesses as far as keeping them clean. But maybe there's a way we could get folks involved in um. Uh sprucing above the plants, I know a lot of people that are into that sort of thing, and. I every time I walk by one of those showers with the water pouring out on the ground, I think, oh, water, it could be feeding the plants, it's going on the ground anyway. Maybe this area, it's kind of things that would trip up that water. Um so I kind of kicked around the idea of uh if we could put it into a program or budget where. Uh we would either pay for or maybe have matching funds for people who wanted to invest in beach accesses that are near and dear to them for whatever reason.
You can actually, Mayor, you had brought that up, I think at the previous meeting, and um we are doing some research on that. Off the top of my head, I can't think of who was contacted, um I know. That's some conversations with Ross on it, um yeah, we're we're looking into that, um what what we could plant, what would what would work.
Right, yeah, because you definitely don't wanna do that really nearly, there's plenty of things that will not survive there.
Right.
What a bunch of dead ones.
So, uh, so, yeah, we're we're, we are researching that.
So, yeah, you know, that brings us to. How much do we want to get involved with beautification on bypass, we are trying to encourage folks to. Uh plant our town tree, which we adopted, the live oak is the official town tree, and. So I'm always looking for ideas from folks that will care about, you know, how can we incentivize that and encourage that? Yes.
Uh I wanted to bring back around the access, this is actually kind of the the main reason I had shown up tonight. Um I wanted to pitch you guys on something and um off of my podium, I feel like this. But. Uh. Basically, I want to I want to pitch you guys on an amenity for the accesses, it's something that we don't have in any other one. Um folks like myself, I love to go to the beach all the time, to still go for surf checks, things like that. There's plenty of times that you go to the beach that you don't necessarily wanna go all the way down on the sand, like you don't wanna pack and do everything, maybe you just wanna be up there, there's. You know, you just wanna be at the top of the rail, you wanna, you know, sit down and have your lunch. Like I said, you wanna do a surf check, you're out there for a bit. And I was at the Clark Street Access, which is great access, super high up, great visibility. Not a lot up there, I mean, you've got that little pergola out there that's kind of falling apart. Um but I was thinking, you know, what if we had some, you know, amphitheater style seating up there? Where, you know, maybe there's like just some big giant benches that are, you know, amphitheater style, it's so high up, you got a great view up there, you know. I go out there, I take my lunch, lots of times I see other people out there taking lunch, you know, I I go out there for a reason, it's a, you know, I'm on my lunch break, I wanna sit there and watch the ocean. I don't have time to go down on the sand, I'm not, I'm not bringing a towel and an umbrella, but I still wanna be there, and you know, a lot of other folks are doing the same thing. And so it's, you know.
We have like standing remotely now, we need some seating.
Yeah, it's like, why can't we have just this sort of temporary seating where it's, you know, stadium style, where you're kind of up nice and high to taking in that view, but like I say, you're not going all the way out on the sand. Um so I've got I've got some more, you know.
Some searches that um.
You know, because we got, this is this is sort of view down from the the furrow up there, and I just sort of sketched out, it's like, you know, you could totally use that that dune side to. Have some great seating that just kind of, you know, it's all worked in right there, it's no, you know, other, I know the lumber prices are ridiculous right now, but. Other than the lumber, you know, it's it's just using the infrastructure that's there already, it's using the geography that's there, so. And you know, if it's something that's cool, it's, you know, why don't we do it at a couple of other accesses, I mean, we've got, however, was it thirty accesses in the town, something like that, so. Anyway, I've got some.
And I know there's a bunch of camel, right?
Yeah, there's, I've got, I've got this, so I can.
Meredith probably could enlighten us on what all the rules are, there, there are a ton of rules about what you can and can't do on the dune. So we we try to maximize what's allowable, right?
We we definitely do, um once you, you're only allowed a certain square footage of of deck. On a dune crossover, and um then it can't be greater than five to six feet in width for the walkway, and then you're allowed a certain square footage. And it has to be. At the top of the primary dune, and anything east of the primary dune has to be accessed to the dry sand beach and cannot. Go past the first line of stable natural vegetation. Y'all know that Glen Mir is closed right now because the stairs got taken, Ross is having to turn the stairs to to meet those requirements for the the vegetation line. Can't go straight out anywhere, it goes too far into the dry sand beach, so now they have to turn.
There's a camera, right?
Yeah, these are these are state regulations that that are um very restrictive on what can be done east of the um crest of the dune. So.
So a design like that, you think would not even be possible, or you think it could be possible?
We can sure, we can surely run it by them.
Yeah.
I think it, I think it um is is worth asking, I think that just off the top of my head, it might be.
Too big.
Too big?
Move it over.
But um maybe there's something that that they'll they'll give us some ideas of, oh, we can't do that, but maybe you could do. Blank, and we can we can come back and see.
Yeah, because it's so different, I agree with you, you know, you can, you can only get up there and you can stand, and sometimes there's benches, but you can't see the ocean, so that would be, I mean, people really.
A cool solution.
Ah, such a nice idea, yeah.
And you can take your platforms and re- remove the platforms and make them bleachers.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
But you would lose your platform, you would lose your your gazebos.
Exactly, I think, you know, we've got so many accesses, they're all at different points in their lifespan. That, you know, I think the recreation group or another group that we put together could sort of do an assessment of. Where they all are, which one's the next up for upgrades, and and that's a really great idea that I think we will try to create if.
And we've been working on the shoreline accesses, um we did, we we did a a a good inventory. Two years ago, three years ago, when we did the bathrooms at Prospect.
Right, I knew we had studied it.
And when we did that, we did a full inventory of the number of spaces, uh how long are are, you know, whether it was fully ADA, partially ADA, um. What amenities were there, and where are, we had been working towards getting that into an updated shoreline access plan for for you guys to look at and review. And make some recommendations on on improvements and how you would like to prioritize that, so that's in the works too.
So, yeah, so do you know that we've had lots of, we've had, you know, when we all came, three of us came into office right before COVID. And uh right as COVID was hitting was when we had our retreat, we had to cancel it, ended up doing it months later. Uh but actually, it was probably more productive, because we know each other better than. And um so we set up, we set a whole bunch of things kind of in motion to study and think about it. Now we're we're, you know, climbing up this ramp towards our next big fiscal budget that starts July one. And um and you can tell that staff is already working on making sure these ideas are incorporated into how we do it, but. That's all we like in the public, too, because you never know when a really great idea is gonna pop up, that's fantastic, thanks for bringing it to us. Thanks, Amy, for bringing the uh uh on the sound side as well. Just wanna, just to wrap up, I think we've had pretty good consensus to maybe just instruct staff to do a feasibility study. One day's idea to kick back, you know, what feasibility feasibility study we did for the restrooms. While that work's already done, let's see what we could. Is that correct?
Sounds like it.
So I just wanna make sure that we at that point, we're asking staff just to do a feasibility study based on. What work we already did for the restroom, if we, and studying camera regulations that if this is possible or not, and so which accesses maybe should have. Some variation.
For Mr. Rollins, I think.
Yeah, it's a wrong idea.
Right, I I I'm gonna look at what he did and impose those questions to Kama, if there is any alternatives. Um or possibilities of of any. Variation of that, then we would look at our existing study and see if that would actually fit on any of our dunes, it would ha- it would take a fairly significant dune, he's right, Clark Street is a. Is a fairly significant uh dune system, um that you would have to have something like that for it even to be considered. Um it wouldn't work somewhere like First Street or Heeman.
There's not much to.
But, you know, you would need, you would need a very wide, broad, steep dune, um but I will take his plan, take it to the the division. Uh manager, he's actually coming down to to see me hopefully this week, and um we'll talk about it, and then. Depending on what he says, we'll look at the inventory we did before and see where it is, where it is, and and. Bring any of that back to you, yea or nay.
Certainly, it'll be quite popular if it ever was able to be built, so.
Yeah.
You can go down there with your suit on, sit for a couple of minutes, you know.
You know, we'll get seen in Washington, so.
Right, but a very, very good jump to it.
Right.
So. We could like a countertop even, like at the pergola, you know, if you had like.
Instead of just four inches.
Just a two by eight or two by ten, you know, just countertop, you can just stand, that's.
Pick it up to second, second, right.
You know.
Oh, yeah, 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 just sitting and be able to look over top.
That's all, that's the beauty of it, like I say. Just have a two by eight on top of the.
Yeah, yeah, even that would work, like a like a like a bar, you know, yeah.
Yeah.
Remember the pit we built, just not not a bed seat, but it was like a bar height seat, so you can stand and talk to somebody sitting down and. Station excepting, so. A big step, right? Good ideas. But it kind of goes to that theme that I was sort of. You as you get to before you brought that up, was uh the two two big places, obviously, our our campus here around around town hall, and the police station is. Beautiful, uh finally got a way over new repaving this past year. Um the vegetation is beautiful and it's been taken care of so well by our Ross's team. Um but I I think with public, they mostly drive through the six miles on bypass, but six miles on beat true. So I'm always trying to think ways that as the town, as, you know, the stewards of that infrastructure. How much do we wanna get involved in beautification, that obviously, there are private businesses all of it now, private houses all of it now. Um but when you go to other tourism destinations, a lot of times you see. Beautiful landscaping along the sidewalk and in public spaces um. That are very inviting, make you feel like, wow, really, I'm in a place. Uh you know, what is our, what is our look and feel, we've been mostly very hands off and. Kind of a hopscotch for lots of kinds of sidewalks, and now that we've finished the big, big lifts of. A multi-use pavement way down Bay Drive, which took. Five or six years, um we're like more than that, ten years all in, a couple of really big phases there. Um and we've kind of filled in on most of the hopscotches, we, I think we're trying to work with the. The Park Service about the last stretch there by the monument, it doesn't have a multi-use on it yet, but it's certainly a good candidate. And um obviously, the visitor's bureau is keen on giving money for such things, so. I know we've got folks on the uh like a pedestrian and and all the streets committee that look at these things, but whenever we have a public challenge, we're public streets, obviously.
Um well, for a while now, I've been wishing that there's a sidewalk on Third Street. It just seems like such.
You know that's happening, right?
It's coming, it's coming.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, that's already in the budget.
Because, because we we talked about it as as one of the, as far as the east west roads go, in my opinion, it's the, it's one of the busiest.
It's so busy, and there's always people walking on old bikes, and it's just compelling, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, and cars, everybody's using it as a main.
Yeah.
Car path, too, so, yeah, that's coming.
Is that, is that, is that the only east west corner?
I don't know if everybody knows about it.
That's in, that's in final engineering.
Awesome.
Is that the only east west corner, are there any other ones?
It's gonna be the only one.
It's the first one, the first, uh, we're trying to prioritize which ones and when, and can't do it so much at one time, but.
Will it go across?
There's there's one, there's one built at Helga two, it's only gonna go to the first um cross street um on West Helga. To match up with the sidewalk on East Helga and the pedestrian crossing, so there will be an additional sidewalk put on West Helga. To go with East Helga and the push button um crossing there, there's also a sidewalk being installed at East Martin Street right now. Which also has a push button crossing with the Walgreens and CVSs. Um and there's also the recent one street parking added to Martin Street, because that's a very popular beach access um to try to allow some overflow there. And so the every street project is being done. This this year and next year will include some form of sidewalk.
Our streets budget is about a million dollars a year here to take, and um for many years, it was just streets. Uh we had, we were in a big backlog twenty years ago. And slowly catching up, we're getting closer and closer, as we get closer, then we had a lot of flooding issues five and ten years ago, fifteen maybe. So a lot of that money ended up going into drainage, because we have lots of places where we were maxing out what the drainage capacity was, so Pete, our engineer, has been. Really systematic, they looked at what infrastructure, what upgrades, pipes, and we will have the most benefits, most. People in most places that get flooded, so we've addressed a lot of those, and like like uh there, I think was alluding to, we're starting to lean towards more. Pedestrian into that budget each year, which is really exciting, so like I said, Third Street, if I'm not mistaken, it's gonna go all the way to Bay Drive, is that right? On the south side, um that's getting a water line in there, so it was gonna get dug up anyway, and we're really fortunate in that that street. Usually when you do something like that, you kind of have to move the street over, but the street is already kind of tucked to the north side, so it really has room for sidewalk, which. Allowed us to do something that otherwise would have been prohibitively expensive in a single budget year, so we're really excited, it's a stretch, but that's where the money's going this next cycle. That's part of the big long-term, you know, uh street improvement for me that needs to. Analyze what which streets are at poor and poor fair and all that sort of thing, keeps a good eye on it, it's always exciting when it ditches your street. Wherever you are, like, get to the very bottom of the list, and go literally, you're back to the top.
It's it's a huge job in there.
It is, it is, it was around.
It's remarkable, his committee does a a lot of work, and and for mayor, all board members do, but the bottom line is. There's two young ladies sitting over there, what really makes it happen, because they have to juggle all the the services that town has, plus the infrastructure, and. Uh we couldn't do any of this if if they weren't on the ball, so. It's a slow process, but it's getting there, and it's a whole lot better than it was.
Trying to do what we can do without these taxes.
Yeah.
Could do around there, just. So, yeah, I think I was alluding to, you know, what what do we want to bypass, it's like, do we want to have investments there, is it, is it about sidewalks? Maybe it's some spending of money on edging the grass, there are particularly on the properties that aren't being maintained by the adjacent property owners. Um you think of the main intersections and places like that, that are still delightfully unkept, but I'm not talking about looking like um. Disneyland or anything, but uh, you know, just taking it up a little notch. You know, we're looking at maintenance budgets and that and. You know, everybody's gonna have a case for every budget, but uh, beautification's big priority.
Well, a- as you know, the board um has allowed us to do additional mowing beyond what NCDOT does.
Which I'm grateful for.
And they, yes, and they do do a really good job with that, picking up the trash before they mow. We have, is it, is it three or four supplements?
So basically double B O Ds.
Right.
They'll they'll do one and then.
They do about three.
They'll do one and last. Oh, and then the grass will be this high, we don't come back and do it at half week. We do, we do, every other, every other pass that gets done is what we pay uh us essentially. And their crew walks through with bags and uh picks up the trash ahead of it on both passes, and uh we also do uh. Little pickup for staff on the beach roads, around the access, if it on one fifty eight uh as needed. And also with the sidewalks, every couple of years we'll. Have we'll put out a bid to. Uh trend of edges that grown up over time, we don't do it every year, but about every other year.
Right.
So we have uh late, our more landscapes doing it coming up.
We have so much sand blowing around that it it'll catch somewhere and then something grows and then it catches more sand that that takes too long.
So you think maybe it should be done every year, not every other year, just be sharper, just be sharper.
One of those things that, you know, this happens really slowly, you know, when we. Any of us who were here twenty, thirty years ago, remember when you could lay down in the middle of a bypass and have a sandwich in an off season. Uh tho- those days are over, you know, we have a thirty-five, forty thousand people going in each direction every single day. And it's, you know, it's like I said, you only got one chance for a first impression, and if that's, you know, grass growing over the curb. That's what we want you to remember, I don't I don't want that to be what the down remember, should I?
If D U C does do a uh like a gutter thing up once a year.
Yep.
I'm just gonna ask them, make sure they're coming, make sure they're coming, but they they come once a year, thing to gutters up, and it's amazing how the dirt settles into that gutter van.
We're about to have a really pretty bypass this year, so this is really much more a long-term discussion, because in the fall they're gonna start paving. One fifty-eight through eighty-eight, if all goes according to plan, I think they're, they'll find out when the budget comes out, July one we'll know for sure. If they're coming here, but that isn't that the plan I've heard that we're gonna get.
I talked to David uh earlier. David offered it to you too. He told me they planned to pave the bypass uh in the off season, didn't give me an exact date, couldn't give me an exact date because. Like I said, the budget doesn't have a plan, he doesn't know the scope yet, whether he wants. Halfway through the hill, stop at Colin Road, or if they have funding to push it in the neck there or through that head or all the way down.
They already did part of getting on, they pick up there and go as far as they can with whatever money they get.
Yeah, like you know, last year we had many bad storms and a whole lot of, maybe maybe their budget's good, they could make through the whole bypass this year. But, yeah.
Much disappointment.
And of course, if we get one big storm instead of that that budget, that money could be pulled. It would be anything else, yeah. But they plan on doing this year. They need to.
Yeah, it's definitely due, it's definitely hit, at the end of this little.
They have a big pipe they have to replace over these third street that's failing, so they incorporate that into their, into this project.
Yeah, that's a really big pipe.
It's getting old, it's. It's it's the. Be replaced.
You know, like thirty-six, it's it's a huge one.
Thirty-six. They don't fight.
So, yes, we want that to fail, so we gotta get it out of there.
It's not failing yet, but it's.
Right, yeah, it's due, it's due for an upgrade before it's.
It needs to be replaced before you replace it.
It's kind of like you want a towel and you want to replace it.
Before.
Yeah.
Don't wait as long as it did for Bonner. It's problematic.
Yeah.
That's the deadline.
But bottom line is, we're really fortunate to be able to live and do what we do, because not only do we have the excellent fire service that we have. Police department, but right now we're doing the bulk pickup. And those guys are doing a phenomenal job, I've seen them around town uh picking up and and they make sure that they don't tear up when they pick up. You know, it's it's really a good job they're doing, so we're pretty lucky.
And the county's having trouble staff and everything, we're glad we have enough people to do it, it's very hard to hire right now.
That whole pickup is, I think, I I hear everybody say it, they're so happy that you know how it does that, yeah.
It's a really nice service.
It's a relief by everybody, for everybody.
And I think, yeah, a lot of people replace stuff this year, so a lot of old stuff going out, I'll be curious to know what the tonnage is this year, it's gonna be big.
So that leads me to trash. And so um as in the agenda, um and as Commissioner Winley um had brought up a few months ago. I I, in addition to Commissioner Winley, have received a request about considering going to to pickups year round, to weekly pickups year round. Um so I came in and met with Debbie and um and Steve and so. So we talked about um some ideas and I think um some concerns that I was, you know, concerns that I was hearing were. The multiple trash cans kind of get clunky and get in the way, and I think for those of us who maybe have those like seventy-five for greater. Wide properties, we don't notice it as much, but in the areas where it's more like fifty feet wide, I think it it gets cumbersome when you have one or two. Trash bins, um and so we had talked about just doing some education on placement. And then also my concern that we have talked about is in in general, and I had mentioned, I I'm I'm not necessarily in favor of going to the two. Even though it's a little bit of feedback we've received and and to to be fair, I mine was just two people and. I think yours was one or two, so this isn't like a big, you know, we're getting tons of complaints by any means, but. Uh but I do see that, you know, people are stacking their trash cans and then it's blowing, and so that's a concern of mine. Um obviously in relation to the environment and just beautification, when you, you know, when people come down here, if trash is. Is blowing everywhere and our trash cans are overflowing, then that's not a great first impression, nor is it for the environment. My concern with going with twice a week is that. I think people would have to think less about the amount of trash that they're creating and what they're consuming. And so that's a little bit concerning to me, if you can just fill up two cans. You know, or you could, you know, if you can fill up your can and it goes twice a week, then you might not have. You know, that consciousness of, you know, I have to keep my trash under one, I mean, I know, I think about it. So um we had talked about some ideas and maybe just doing some education type things, just. You know, placement, trash can placement, appropriate trash can use, what should go in your trash can. Um and that kind of thing, so I think.
Reminder reminder of the perk side availability and the recycling center, um which is no additional calls.
Right, and the and those hours have increased now and are back to normal, we talked about, so. Um so anyway, I think some of the issues have been solved that way, so I just wanted to address that.
Let me ask one question while you're talking about the recycling center. Is that the only place we have if you can get the uh mulch?
Yes.
It is.
Yes.
I was just thinking it'd be it'd be nice if we had it somewhere else people could get it later, because they close it one time.
Because of the hours.
Yeah.
Saturday is a line over there, busy.
Yeah.
Remotes is great. Might might be something, maybe.
I can't think of anything right off the top of my head, but I'll talk with um Steve and Derek and see if there's some ideas.
If they close it like what, four? I think.
I think so, because they.
Yeah.
They get they get going pretty early back there.
And and, you know, most people are.
And then on Saturday, so.
And then Saturday is restricted, is very limited.
I don't know, they can even close early on a Tuesday and be open Friday nights, for people getting ready for the weekend when they're gonna do the most.
Well, I just, I and and the reason I'm asking is I heard, you know, meeting here recently that we've got an overabundance of mulch.
Yeah.
So how are we gonna get rid of it, you know? So we're trying to give it all of it, just something with that.
The idea is, I was gonna mention about the trash pickup too, that in my conversations with folks at Public Works, that. The staffing that frees up in the winter time, we don't have the big tourist houses that are really driving the to double pickup. That 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 staff does a lot of great work for us, and if we pick up trash all right, we'll end up having other costs to do already, so thank you.
And we also talked about the cost of, you know, the the trucks going out twice as much as they're going out right now. And and then, you know, January, you might be sending a truck over with a half load full, well, it's going all the way to Stumpy Point, so you're you're wasting.
Less efficient.
Now you're doing, so it's less efficiency, it's more carbon, you know, carbon emissions, so, you know, it's, there's. There's.
It's something. Because it's unusual, people always wonder, why is it like that?
Right, right.
But there is a lot of, a lot of thought went into the decision to do it many years ago, and you do revisit it, revisit it from time to time, and goes, that's still a good way to go. But those guys uh. That team goes out and works on beach accesses in the winter time, thinks of things that are.
And they work a lot with the street.
They do street, they'll put in the minor culverts and pipes, I remember they put in twenty-four something.
Help with the signage.
Signs, there's lots of, lots of maintenance and.
And they they give the tree cut crews of doing their their. Allied trimming in November and December. You know. I said about the trucks and get their. Part of that, so.
Yeah, the amount of stuff we pull out of trees is pretty phenomenal, when you go back there and see how much it stacks up.
We need a lot more this year.
Yeah, things are going like crazy this year, yes.
I think just in the past few years, like with only having the single week pickup, I've noticed with having. Young children is after Christmas, it would be nice if there was like an extra pickup. That would be really helpful, because we have like boxes and wrapping paper and and you're getting rid of old stuff. There's new stuff's coming in and I'm just, and then you have family over and I've just noticed there's just like an overflowing and I would be stuffing stuff for three weeks, you know.
Let it out, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know, it's a thought.
We could definitely share that with Public Works and see if that's.
Like a potential add that to maybe the holiday.
Holiday. Thanksgiving and Christmas over the time people have guests down.
And we're also gonna do, uh we're also gonna point out to people, you can get a second can, and it is very, very reasonable.
Yes.
Yeah, you don't have to pay anymore for pickup, but you can have two cans.
Right, right. Not that you would need that, that's the one.
No, actually, yeah. But we've reduced the cost to make it easier for people if they did feel that they needed a second container.
Sixty, something sixty-seven, yeah.
Oh, wow, that's amazing.
It's very, yeah, it's very reasonable.
Used to be eighty-five, now sixty-five, that's fantastic.
It's it's basically the town's fault.
So.
Yeah.
Somebody's.
I'm not gonna do it, just have a new, it's really looking rough.
Some of these homes that are doing Airbnbs and the more increase we're seeing in that. I think these home, these week long rentals will create the most trash, and they have those single trash bins. They need to go invest in that second trash bin, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Like the owner who's running it out weekly, because the vacationers, they certainly create create more garbage than I would.
And so you can say that they will, that they'll put notices on it, that if they're, if they. If they're using too much or if they're not putting in it properly, or they need to consider a second one, they'll put notices.
I just curious how you might.
That's good.
Yeah. No doubt, some of those really big houses will have. Six, six trash can.
But we do have a limit.
We have, we have a limit on it, okay?
But Debbie, do you have a general idea of how how many more of these Airbnbs we're seeing like in our town? Yeah, it's a little great way to track it, but is it, are you seeing, are you, you're seeing that change? I mean, I'm seeing it in my neighborhood.
I I don't think the Airbnb um traffic and trash is any greater than a regular rental house. Trash.
I mean.
What what I just learned, I just did a class on short-term rentals, and what, one of the things I learned is. Real estate agencies are now using VRBO and Airbnb as part of their real estate, so you don't really know if it's.
Double or triple or quadruple.
Sun Realty, but it's on Airbnb, it could be a Sun Realty house, they've decided to take that route. And and hotels are also doing it, hotel rooms are doing Airbnb and VRBO, um especially if there's a suite type of hotels.
Right.
So it's really difficult to be able to distinguish between uh private residence that's doing an Airbnb of a room. That might have an extra guest to a vaca- a weekly vacation rental, because they all melded into each other, because the Airbnb. VRBO has become so convenient for people searching for housing. That the real estate agencies don't want to, and Ben, you can probably talk to it, they don't want to lose out on that market.
Channel.
Of Airbnb and VRBO, so the real estate agencies that have brick and mortar are also using it. So it's very hard to distinguish between a private resident that's got a a room that they're putting on VRBO versus. A full rental agency that's just taking advantage of that platform, because it's become so popular and such. Uh uh a convenient way for the customer to rent um space, so it's 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 become very, very great.
But I'm talking about how it affects trash, uh just specifically, because you have the large homes, they have their big, large trash bins, and and some use actual pushout trash bins and others have. Larger bins, and some might try to squeeze by with one bin versus, you know, if you if you know you're running out. We rent two, two bins or, you know, two pushout carts.
There's there's a.
Any house ever sits veteran prior to dumpster.
Dumpster, right.
It's expensive.
And now they eighteen, part of the second.
But I I'm just, I'm a layperson, I don't know, so I'm just saying. I'm just saying, you think that uh that a vacation will create in a week more trash, more trash, in my mind, than than a family of five or something like that.
Probably so, yeah.
And I think that's what's cri- that creates a bit of a problem, and that's why some of those owners should invest in a second.
Right, and that's where the notices come in, that's where like, you know, if you could have noticed that.
But there's, if there's something that you've noticed in your in your area, feel just let us know, because um that is one of the things that Lynn, Lindsay, the sanitation supervisor does.
I see. Identifies what they're talking about.
Okay, and I'm not even wearing that myself, so.
I know, because I wouldn't, I.
Yeah.
And and I, I don't know, that's really cool, but they're notified, the owner would be notified, which is great, yeah.
But in in the height of the season too, when those vacation rentals are at their peak, as as Ben was saying that they're a hundred percent for the summer, that's what we do twice a week.
Right.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
So it should, it should help that problem.
But it's changed, things are changing.
Always.
Yeah, yeah.
Change and and increasing exponentially.
And that's why also too, I think we have talked about, just the awareness of the ability to get a second.
That's enough, that's definitely enough, yeah.
Collection and and how cheap it is, you know, but it's, especially if you're doing a.
Yeah, yeah, keep pushing that, keep pushing that. You're right.
Right.
You're right.
Uh especially if you're doing a rental, because if you're doing a rental. Better be able to spend sixty-five dollars out.
Yeah, yeah, an extra can, yeah, yeah, I agree.
On a regular can.
I run that back one night, right?
One hundred percent agree. Should be current, you not not only, you almost should, just do it.
It's a good business decision, because your guests don't want to have a little filled can either, right?
Yes.
That's to give them the.
And this is happening in everybody's neighborhood, so it's like, where it didn't happen in the past, it's happening everywhere.
More.
Now it used to be, used to be an ocean front problem, now it's.
Some more war, right?
Now it's among the residents, so.
About VRBO with the. Rental companies, I worked for one of the companies on Pateras, there's four main companies and then a few little players. In one year, three of the companies put their entire inventory on VRBO, and the number of houses available on VRBO went up by seven hundred percent in one year.
Yeah.
So the people that were on there before were doing really well, because they would only be in town, but all those inventory on there, that sort of, you get all out.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, all all the companies do ten, fifteen, twenty percent of the business through other channels now, instead of just website. Even though we constantly tell our guests, book direct, you save money. Why pay VRBO a bunch of extra money? But, yeah, yeah. You know, on the housing side, uh I had some good conversations with um my fellow mayors, we do a mayor's lunch. Now that COVID is leaning back to having lunches. We had a couple back a year ago, and it's nice to be back and see those guys. And a lot of discussions about how do we tackle the housing challenges that we have, and so. I'm working with Ben Gutten on putting together a nonprofit that would have as its goal to purchase. Houses that are that are like the kind of a starter house and be able to. Leverage the big players in in the county, across the county. And municipal governments that are interested, including the county, and hopefully some hills and exit. To slowly over time start working to take some of these properties off of the regular market. Put them into a land trust, so that they'll always be affordable, and the idea would be that they would be available to purchase or rent. With certain conditions and restricted deed. Uh and that you would then lease the land underneath the property, so the land trust would hold the land. You get it for cheap the first year, a little bit more the second, a little more third year, but would allow people to buy a house at a lot less than market rate. Be able to build equity over time, and once they got up to market rate, they could cash out their their equity and get onto the regular market. But I think that gap is what's being lost here, and I hope that that's a way that fits the outer banks better, I think fits on the outer banks, the kind of. Fits the outer banks better, I think fits on the outer banks, the kind of folks that live here and stay here and move here. Uh, aren't looking for a handout, they're looking for a leg up and we have a. You know, be incentivized to take care of our properties because you can sell it eventually, there's a lot better than subsidized rents and. Government tends to not be very good at housing in general, so uh it's kind of a novel idea that I hope that we can get off the ground over the next three months or year. Um, and uh sue apartment, bring it into it. So I pitched that every time I talked to anybody, so if you know people who think that's a good idea, send them away. But back to our topic of the town, um. What other priorities do we want to keep around? Well, this is a public forum, we, we've been doing too much talking, we've got a few more people haven't said anything, does anybody have any? Thoughts about what they'd like to see us doing in the next budget or doing philosophically or. We have, you talked a little bit about carbon footprint, I think as we go forward with plans for the next infrastructure, things that we have in the two, five, ten year plan. Trying to look at ways to do a little more green and play a leadership role in reducing carbon.
Um, I was just curious to see if um there's any plans for any more parking spots uh at the beach accesses.
Yeah, you did, you mentioned a couple on.
Oh, on Martin's, yeah, but are there any other ones that?
Um, that would be added to existing accesses, not, not that I'm aware of, um, we have been looking at. Some of our accesses that are currently unimproved and in our feasibility where there is time to i- improve them and that would create additional parking, but at this time, there's no. Specific plans to add parking on the. On any of the existing east side accesses.
The new, the new project on, oh, there's bridges, just with a few spaces next to.
Yeah, they're gonna be on Brick Street, which is about a block off the beach, there'll be a.
Yeah.
One street parking, just like that, I think Martin's getting three spaces, two, three.
Yeah. Um.
Two or three spaces that'll be on the south side of.
There's three spaces, um. We're not gonna delineate. The strip because, well.
So you might get four small cars.
Four small, four small cars.
Three trucks, four small cars.
I'll tell you part.
But no ma'am, there's, there's not a um plan for, for parking expansion at any of the existing improved accesses, they are looking at some of our. Unimproved accesses for, for possible improvement with that, with that.
Kind of thinking I, just lucky enough to get a little tour of the new swell, Swells of Bruin Brewery. Uh, really great looking building, gonna be a real gem for the town, um, great looking architecture, great looking facility. I think they're eight minutes soft opens, June, something in July, maybe, um. Yeah, it's really, really come together over there, beautiful, uh, architectural details and beautiful finishes on the surface, that rode a nice job of it. But they had mentioned, what's the street south of that, is that Lake?
Yeah. Yeah, it's Caroline.
That's. Or KDH.
Like, like you're right, it's right there at the intersection.
Are you talking about the, the additional parking that's, that's for Ramada and things?
No, 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 I'm talking about south of the brewery, just one more block down, that's.
It's either Lake or Fresh Pond.
Or Fresh Pond, that's what it is, Fresh Pond is, is the town line, right? No, Lake is the first, Lake is.
Eight, eight is the town line.
Eight is the town line, right? In my streets, makes it there, so that is in the town, there's a crosswalk there. That, where is there no crosswalk, is there no crosswalk? I think what it is is they thought there should be a crosswalk there.
Probably, like a beach.
Yeah, but actually.
It's an unimproved access.
It's a, it's a walk all the way around.
Oh, that's so, that's right.
Early lake grab access to the, for the outfall.
That's where the outfall is.
Oh, yeah, I didn't really take close to the kind of, but they said something.
And it's also, it's also very, very narrow, we, we've looked at, we looked at improving it, uh, shoot. I wasn't, hadn't been with the town five years, so a, a good long time ago. And it's a, it's narrow because of the infrastructure that's underneath it with the outfall that's owned by DOT, DOT easement. So then it became an emergency access only and then I don't even think it's that anymore, is it? I don't even know. Uh, it's a walk, no, it was emergency vehicle access for the beach, but I don't, I, I, I think that that might have even gone away.
We still need it for driving access.
Okay.
Just still grab lots.
So, um, but yeah, there's a, when we looked at a long time ago because of the DOT infrastructure under it, it became very.
That's all, I couldn't remember if there was a straight crosswalk, that just maybe you wouldn't want one if it's not accrued.
I, I don't know.
Okay, gotcha, and then uh just for the folks, because these guys obviously care about our town enough to be here, um, they might not have heard about the um. The crosswalks with the, with the lights that are going, trying to remember all the details, too, they were. Remind me all the details, I know we, we've got lights going at some of them this year.
Yes, we're starting it, we're starting it this, this year, this budget.
Starting July.
They've already been ordered, yeah.
Well, they're.
We got on board with um Next Head ordering, so we can get, get them in in time for our season.
So these are the uh solar powered lights that only light up when there's a person in the crosswalk, which will help. Looks that are going.
And the problem was visibility, we had a lot of people complaining about the visibility of being able to see people, but so that's a safety issue, but.
It is gonna be uniform and on the beach road and solar powered, like I said, and. And many of the crosswalks, and they studied the crosswalks, um, town said the crosswalks, maybe recognize all the crosswalks.
The ones that were most used to get done for.
Yeah, we done first, uh, then, then there's actually some other spots in the town that. Also in the plan to get these solar powered lights for the crosswalks too, uh, over here, so this area. So, um, yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be the helpful, it's probably save, if it saves one life, that's great, but even beyond that. It's gonna make it a lot nicer, let's get to the beach, the, the lighting as well, so.
Yes, well, if it's money comes up, it's like you say, make, you know, we'll make it look a little bit better.
At least I had the pleasure of getting up to, up to Puerto Rico and I had not been there in a while and. Along the beach north of domes, the streetlights that are close to the beach are LED in red. I guess they did red LEDs because it doesn't distract the turtles as much, right, right, I had not seen that anywhere else before, I don't know, that's really interesting. So I, you know, I don't know enough about it to know whether, we've got a pretty big doom line, so I don't think you're seeing a lot of that from the beach, like whether they're, they're actually flat, but.
No, these aren't very high lights, I mean, they're, they're not way up in the air and.
Yeah, all our lights are really low, we don't have the streetlights still in that, it's pretty nice in our general. Yeah.
It's similar to the one, if you've seen the one on Eighth Street, yeah.
Eighth Street, yeah, and there's some that said.
Yeah.
Did rain, it ripped it.
I think red, something, there's something red though, it, it's obviously stop it, it can distract the driver.
Right, yeah.
I don't know, I don't know.
Things are allowed here anyways.
Yeah.
That's, it was good, they were thinking of the church. So great thing on Apple TV.
Oh, we were just talking about, um, so the town tree and then just trying to make. The town look a little better and greener and, um, are there any regulations that I don't think there are as, as far as like? Could we try to keep, when people clear a lot? Maybe go in and try to keep some of those live oats rather than just mowing it all down, like, um. What's Palmetto and.
Oh, yeah, there's like the whole street.
Houses and like flying a drone, you know? You can see that space and it's just like annihilated, there is not a tree left, you know, um. It would just be nice if maybe the town could like maybe regulate that a little bit. Maybe if there is an old tree on the lot and it's a live oak, could we keep it somehow if it's not right smack in the center?
I think, uh, Duck, you guys have studied this a bunch, in Duck, they have, uh, probably some of the most restrictive rules in this county, which I think. Um, there, you know, when you build a house, you have a building envelope, which is the side yards, the back, the front yards, okay?
Yeah.
If I'm not mistaken, their rule, I have spent years to read it, something like anything over, anything over four inches. You can't cut, if it's in the side yard where it's not gonna be where your house is gonna be.
Right.
Um, which is pretty dramatic, because you know, if you want to have a forgotten landscape in your house. Think in the past, there hadn't been a lot of appetite for that extreme of a move, but Duck is a unique area where there's five hundred residents and. Thousands of thousands of homes.
Southern shores is, is the one that only allows you to clear the, the pad of your house and your septic area and driveway.
Yeah, maybe that's the most extreme.
We have those in the maritime forest, but on most of our lots, in, in the ones you're talking about specifically. To clear the driveway, septic area and the pad of your house is the entire lot.
Yeah.
Uh, there's, 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 because the, the, the septic tank and drain field don't have to be in our building envelope.
In the building envelope.
They can be, they can be ten feet from the property line, so depending on where they put that, you're really not. You would be very prohibited on small lots in towable hills for construction. If, if you didn't allow it outside, out of, outside of that envelope, you would, you would make some.
I remember I missed the wrong term, I guess, what is it, what is the box called that's not the side yards?
The building envelope.
That is a building.
Where, where you can build, inside the dotted lines?
The dotted line, yeah, yeah, but you're saying, yeah, septic tank may be.
It could be outside, as, as can fire ordinance, which people take extreme advantage of, as can accessory structures, including pools. Um, they can be five feet from the property in the rear inside yard if they're in brown, so that included with septic tank and drain fields and, um. A lot of times that leads to. Not having a lot of trees left initially and what we do as a planning department is encourage people to, to. To use vegetation as their buffer from their neighbors rather than fencing and, and things like that, and we encourage trees and if the tree is in the right of way. Um, they can't cut it down without getting permission from the town. So we control what we own, um, and, and haven't been able to come up with a good formula for the private property. The balance between the, the trees and the private property rights of development, so. But we do try to control what gets cut down in our right of way.
Would you like where you're going with it and I, and I've been a fan of this idea in general, but we just never have settled on something that was sort of widely supported. But we've talked, you know, when we're talking about other problems that we've tried to address, we said, well, sometimes you can regulate it, sometimes you can just incentivize. So we're talking about like, how do we get, make it, put some money where our mouth is and say, I'm willing to pay you. I'll give you a break on the fee or whatever, if you save trees that are live oats or over a certain size and. Um, you know, we really need to study that so we won't give away the farm, but at the same time, I'm with you, I'm not keen on seeing another big neighborhood going where every single tree is taken out. Uh, anyway, we can discourage that and encourage. And to do, even if it costs the taxpayer some money, it will be good for us all in the long term, I think that those people will be behind that.
Yeah, just when you see it from above, it's really disheartening, that whole section, you know, there's trees and. Small lots all around there, that whole area, and then you got that and it's like there's nothing left.
All the houses is ten feet.
Yeah. Yeah.
Don't go, you know, the tree plane.
On Friday.
Friday, Friday. Towns tree, yeah. Where is that gonna be exactly, right over here, so we got lots.
It's at ten thirty.
Ten thirty Friday, yeah.
So I wish it would be my bestie job, I'll be here all the time. But, uh, yeah, thank you for covering that and, and that's happening, and we're trying to get some publicity around pride in our live oats and.
And I think little things like this, like just bringing awareness to.
We start the idea, just a few people.
Yeah, so.
We talked to even like, uh, one commercial developer about transplant, because there's some, there's one being built right now, has live oats on it, I remember we talked to. They looked at, it's very expensive, obviously, to transplant them, even almost sometimes not possible, but. Expense, they just haven't wanted to spend that money. They would try, you know, try.
And they said that they had tried, uh, it was the cookout where there's.
Yeah.
There's a tree that's just in by about a foot, but they needed it to be pavement there, it's anyway. Said, we tried everything we could to keep that tree, but it's just not, so at least they were thinking about it.
And we did, and we did ask, and we asked, yeah, just ask.
So if you ever think of anything that we could. Any other way we can encourage, for sure, it's.
Yeah, so there's a, there's, there's lots of rules and then there's a little negotiating now again, so we, we definitely have it as a priority. Big projects come away, we're gonna do everything we can to encourage them to do those kinds of things.
Is there, um, like, what's the minimum lot size? It seems like they're getting smaller too.
Well, prior to this most recent development, if it was fifteen thousand.
Unless it was plotted prior to nineteen ninety one.
There's some old lot, old lots, all of, all, you know, all of old that one, five thousand square lots, there's a bunch of existing lots, no new lots will ever be made that size. If it's a new development, generally it'd be fifteen K and I. There's a long.
But Palmetto Street was plotted in the twenties and it was twenty five foot wide lots, and that's how they were able to get that, they were. They were taking small lots and making them bigger, which made them more conforming to our current ordinance, so most of those lots are between six and seventy five hundred square feet. Um.
But they were smaller, that was two, right, that's, that's two of the teeny little lots together.
It's, it's a, it's a, because they did fly lots, it's kind of like parts and pieces of three or fours, um. Because they did it the way they did it, um, but it decreased the nonconformity because they were plotted at twenty five feet. Um, majority of our town was plotted well before nineteen sixty. So, uh, if you don't have a lot that's fifteen thousand square feet, you can only build a single family well and you can't do any type of commercial endeavors. The fifteen thousand is the absolute, anything under that, well, seventy five hundred in the residential low zone. Um, but if you have to fifteen thousand, do any commercial, and if you do a subdivision, you have to do at least seventy five hundred square. We're trying to make it like that.
Right, okay, yeah, so I didn't realize that was like an old.
A lot of this was drawn out before this was a town.
Yeah.
Way back. And they've sat there, trees on them for generations.
There's twenty five by one hundred foot lots.
And then they combine lots and they're more conforming.
Yes, and instead of being twenty five hundred square foot lots, there's six thousand and seventy five hundred square foot lots, which make them much more conforming.
More objection, yeah, yeah.
I once read this great statistic, I always stuck with it, in nineteen fifty, the average American lived in two hundred and fifty square feet. By two thousand, the average American, uh, the, America lived in an average of seven hundred and fifty square, triple in fifty years. We all are living in bigger health. Less people. It's, uh, you know, you have worse problems. We'll get some about trees, yeah, um, I'm trying to figure out. Now we've gone from a short meeting to a long meeting, tell me if I'm legal or you or anybody needs a break or, is there's a topic that anybody feels like we haven't covered, I don't want anybody to feel like it got left out. I'll take the silence as you're getting tired of this. You don't want to be rude and walk out. Uh, so without objection, I will, I'll kind of bring this to a close and. Once again, thanks so much for being here, um, I know it's tough to come out and participate and. These meetings are usually horribly boring, but you guys have made it a torchy for us to. Great idea with beach access, I don't get some down a third sheet, glad that you guys go out to the community and share the news, the cool things that we're doing around the edges. Know that you can.
Be sure if anybody wants to get on any of the town committee.
There you go, gotta get, we, we're always looking for more people to help participate. Uh, as we get, you know, we've got a little form that you can fill out online and you can say what things you're interested or say, put me on any committee and. But it gets, you know, get in and roll up proceeds, we love to hear from folks and, uh, you have dedicated time to bat it around and then. Bring it to us so that we can, you know, better serve everybody. So I know that, you know, my phone number, all these guys' phone numbers and emails are all super public. Yep, so never hesitate, I know, funny, if you have emailed me and called me in the past, please continue to do so. Thank you, thank you. Uh, oddly, um, after the public, wait, so we already did, I think we jumped over that, um, last. You're supposed to do that again, there was public forum and then, that's it, so we got one more. One more motion, yeah, the public, you know, pay, like, that was it, I could make a motion, we're. I was like, and that's my idea, we got a motion and a second, and a discussion during that, all fit in favor. All right, we were adjourned, thank you so much. All right, we will adjourn, thank you so much. Thank you all very much for your input.
Hi. Yes, that's what I thought, it's hard with the NAG. We did. Good, I just. I'm going now, um the daughter's, you know, coming to visit her mom and then they're going back. I should chill on yourself. I should have said take care. That's crazy. That's crazy.
You've got like, yeah, there's several, somebody goes down. What, what's that? Yeah. They haven't, it looks like they haven't been crazy since you were there.
Yeah, but for reasons.
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Let's go.
I don't know that's.
Yeah. Is that, that's so.
I'm gonna say. I'm gonna say.
It's nothing. They actually have the first street.
There's plenty of time, like I said, I think, yeah, it's up there, other folks out there.
Maybe, maybe I'm making that.
Maybe I'm, no, 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 no.
And then like your camera's awkward, like this was more access, like there's like three, four, five people standing there, just, just standing there, talking, they're like, oh, wow.
Something on the next street access.
So when you presented. So, good, thank you.
Thanks for that. And I used to take a white, yeah. Every time.